We'll test you. We'll see if you can get it all up and going this week. I bet you can.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like that TV that was broken last time is still...
Broken.
Still broken. I don't recall which one is less than a year old. Worth looking into. Where they manage it, but we...
I think Kathy Katan.
Because I've got one of those in the city of Blue Creek. It's managed in the south side of the town. When, when this happens, you're not going to get paid for it. Yes. Yes. Yep, that was, that was traditional financing improvement. Probably why Roquette loved to turn it over to you.
I don't know what's... What? Yeah? You mentioned it to...
If we, like, when our contract is up, there's no place for us to go back to the client before. There's no offices down there. Roquette doesn't like to go on top of you. Renting, owning property is a liability and they don't like that. No, but, yeah, I get it.
Conversations for when there are microphones on.
I'd like to call to order the city council meeting August 7th, 2025, 5:30 PM at 501 Main Street. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call?
Frenshaw?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mullen?
Here.
Tackley?
Here.
Jade?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Greenwald? All present.
Item number four, mayor's correspondence. Friday, August 7th, 2025, the West Point Sweet Corn Festival is up and running from today through Saturday, Sunday, August 10th, 2025. The, um, tomorrow is the big back-to-school festival at the Trinity United Methodist Church from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. They have school supplies, games, face painting, um, box lunches, ice cream, and a lot of information from all our local in, agencies for any assistance that you need, and it is open to everyone. Um, and then item number three, music by contingency at the Cellar at 9:00 PM. Saturday, August 8th, 2025. The, um, Keokuk Farmers Market from 8:00 to 11:00 AM at the Keokuk Mall. The West Point Sweet Corn Festival will continue on Saturday, that's day and Sunday. And Great River Players will be holding a curtain call celebrating 45 years of GRP. They have a meal at 6:00 PM with a look back and a look forward to the 46th season. And music by the Staggered Band at the Bar at 9:00 PM. Um, then in a week, a couple of weeks, we have, uh, Friday, August 22nd, Saturday, August 23rd, and Sunday, August 24th, 2025. The Grand Theater will be celebrating their 100th year anniversary. You can get tickets from any board member and come join the fun. Tickets are $20 for the program. If you would like to attend the special cabaret evening Saturday at the Knights of Columbus Hall prior to the show at the Grand, it starts with champagne at 5:30 PM with music and hors d'oeuvres. And tickets for those two events together would be $50. Then starting August 27th, anyone wanting to run for the mayor position or the first, third, fifth, and seventh wards on the council, uh, or for the council position and one-at-large position can take out papers from Keokuk City Hall. It's time to set up and be part of the decision-making in process for the city of Keokuk. So we'll look forward to having a lot of people reaching out to run. Um, just a quick note from the, uh, code enforcement, uh, people. Uh, because we've had so much rain, we've had a lot of grass growing, and we have a lot of people that are throwing their grass into the streets and on the sidewalks. And just remember that that is a, uh, you can be fined for that. It, there's a code that says you're not to do that, so please clean up those grass trimmings. They tear up the roads and the curbs and the sidewalks, and we all know how much we want our roads and stuff fixed. So let's try to, um, work together to not do that. And then as always, we need to eat, drink, and shop local because kindness matters. Item number five, citizens' request. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to the council, you can come to the podium. Um, state your name and your address and give us a brief summary of why you're here. Anybody?
Name's Chad Nye, 2413 Lincoln. I just had a request about asking about having the two blocks that I live on surveyed. Thank you.
Anybody else? Item number six, the consent agenda. Minutes of the regular council meeting of July 17th, 2025. Minutes of the Safety Committee meeting of July 24th, 2025. Resolution approving a liquor license for the Keokuk Labor Temple, five-day license, 301 Blondo Street, class, special class C retail alcohol license effective August 28th through September 2nd, 2025. A special event permit for Jessica DeShaw, the 5K rooster walk-run, October 5th, 2025, 10:00 AM to noon, starting at Keokuk Senior High parking lot. And a motion to pay bills and transfers listed in the register's number 5486 through 5488. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven. Now is the time and place for the public hearing for the Keokuk Municipal Airport Terminal Rehabilitation Project. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on July 18th, 2025. I am opening the public hearing at 5:35 PM. Do we have any discussion? Was there any, with, with no discussion here, did the city clerk have any written comments or objections, or have they been received? With no, being no further comments or objections on that matter, I will close the public hearing at 5:36 PM. Um, item number seven B, consider resolution awarding a contract for the airport terminal rehabilitation project, FAA project number 3-19-0050-027, BIL-AIG 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The city of Keokuk has reviewed the bids received for the Keokuk Municipal Airport Terminal Rehabilitation Project, FAA project number 3-19-0050-027, BIL-AIG 2025. A total of two bids were received. The lowest responsive and reasonable bidder was Jim Barton Construction of Mount Pleasant, Iowa. The bid was over the engineer's estimate and appears to be a fair and reasonable. Analysis of the project budget shows the ability of the city to fully fund the project using FAA IIJA funding resources. With all the necessary bid requirements being met, we recommend that the contract in the amount of $303,530 be awarded to Jim Barton Construction. Our consultant has reviewed the bid's submittal documentation and also concurs with this recommendation. The project is 95% funded by FAA IIJA, formerly BIL. A 5% local match of $19,186 is the local contribution required to complete this proposal. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion?
I would just comment, I struggled coming up with 5% of $303,000 being $19,186. Uh, but it, that does include all the engineering fees, both design phase and then construction phase. Uh, overall engineering costs are somewhere in the neighborhood of $73,000, about that for both pieces.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight. Consider resolution setting dates of consolation and public hearing on the proposed amendment and restated Twin Rivers Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Keokuk, state of Iowa. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The resolution does the following. Sets August 14th, 2025 at 2:00 PM for consultant, consultants meeting with other taxing jurisdictions. Sets September 4th, 2025 at 5:30 PM for public hearing and adoption of the urban renewal amendment. The planned amendment authorizes the usage of TIF funding to cover all or portion of the costs associated with planned Timia Street project and associated sewer slash storm water separation work. There is also an additional authorization to annually cover the reimbursement of $25,000 of general fund administrative costs for TIF-related work over the next five years. Staff recommends approval. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine. Consider resolution approving contract for towing and storage with Raridan's Auto Salvage. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
City vehicle towing contract. The city of Keokuk vehicle towing contract is due to expire on August 31st, 2025. The Public Works Department reached out to three local towing companies, and only one company is interested in towing for the city of Keokuk. That company is Raridan's Auto Supply. The fee schedule has not changed and will remain as follows. Priority toes for normal weather, $100. Priority toes in response to snow emergencies, $100. Routine toes, $100. Storage for each 24-hour period or portion thereof, inside, $45, outside, $40, and cycle, $20. City vehicle, light duty, up to thirty-three, three-fourth, three-fourth ton, $60. City vehicle, medium duty, up to one and a half ton, $100. City vehicle, heavy duty, $150. Special weights applied to certain heavy vehicles after five miles, which is $3.50 a mile. I would therefore recommend a contract be approved for the vehicle towing with Raridan's Auto Salvage for two-year period beginning September 1st, 2025 and ending August 31st, 2027. Do I have any discussion?
I just had one question. Um, our current contract, was it also for two years? So the timeframe's also not changing?
Yeah, the timeframe doesn't change either.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10. Consider resolution awarding Shoemaker &amp; Holland for construction services for the Riverfront Trail. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Construction services contract for the Riverfront Trail project. The city of Keokuk has decided to proceed with the Riverfront Trail project subject to the occurrence and approval of the Iowa Department of Transportation, Iowa DOT, and the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, U.S. Department of Transportation, when applicable. The city desires to employ Shoemaker &amp; Holland to provide the construction services to assist in the development and completion of this project. The consultant is willing to perform these services in accordance with the terms of the attached standard consultant contract supplement agreement number one for the local public agency consultant contracts with federal aid participation with the amount of $65,000. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion?
Yes, I have a quick question. Um, when it says that it's subject to the occurrence and the approval, is there a chance that they just won't approve it?
They, they have already approved it.
They, they already have?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11. Consider resolution awarding, oh, consider resolution in support of the Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management Plan for the city of Keokuk. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Approve roadside vegetation management plan. In January of 2025, an integrated roadside vegetation management plan for cities under 10,000 population was completed for the city of Keokuk. This plan needs to be approved and signed by the mayor. Section 314.21, 1 point C of the Iowa Code states, "A city or county shall not be, um, eligible to receive monies from the Living Roadway Trust Funds unless the city or county has an integrated roadside vegetation management plan in place consistent with the objectives in section 314.22." Section 314.22 of the Iowa Code, Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management Plan states, "It is declared to be in the general public welfare of Iowa and a highway purpose for the vegetation of Iowa's road sides to be preserved, planted, and maintained to be safe, visually interesting, ecologically integrated, and useful for the many purposes." Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion?
Yes. I have some questions. Um, I expect, since the way it's writ, written, that, uh, one is assuming that funds are going to be asked for?
Yeah, we, so we applied for a grant under the, uh, Living Roadway Trust Fund earlier this year. And one of the reasons we didn't receive that is this plan, uh, hasn't, hadn't went through our council and been approved yet. So we're going to look at filing or applying for that grant again when it comes available in the spring.
Okay. Um, when we approved a few meetings ago, um, with the state for maintenance of roads?
Yes.
Um, was that strictly for snow removal? Or does that subject us to doing mowing alongside the roads and maintenance to the roadways?
Um, that's predominantly for snow removal for the, for Seventh Street and Main Street. And that is a contract that we're required to do with the DOT annually. This is, this is nothing, nothing to do with that.
Something different.
Yes.
And, um, this does not involve then our obligation to the bypass at the west end of town?
Uh, no, that is outside of our city limits.
Okay. But we do have city property out there.
Um, the, um, Kinders Tree Park is incorporated into the city. So where it'll, it crosses the bypass there and then incorporates Kinders Tree Park. But we don't have any right-of-way obligations.
Oh, I beg to differ. Don't we have Elcom property out there that's on...
That's on Carbide Lane.
We have no obligations on the bypass side?
No.
Of that property?
That's, that's DOT right-of-way.
Okay. Um, all right.
One of the things that I had asked Brian about in regards to this application was if, uh, when we're, when we do this, this management plan, if this puts additional duties on us beyond what we are already doing? And does, is this beyond the scope of what you are already doing for roadside vegetation management?
Um, no, we, so the way we, the way we had this written is when, um, I believe it was Pam, Casey, and we have, there was a whole group of people that met, that met, that put multiple plans together for the, uh, what the heck was the grant that they worked on for downtown and with Trees Forever? Um, I can't remember the name of the grant. We didn't get the grant with the one right over here behind us for the Washington School area. Um, and so working with the gentleman from Trees Forever, I sat down with him and gave him what we currently do, and that's what was written into this plan. Where I didn't, we didn't add anything that we don't currently mow or take care of in the right-of-ways.
But if you look at page three of this documentation, uh, "In accordance with this IRVM plan, the city will develop a public awareness campaign to gain support for integrated roadside management through media, established organizations, seminars, and brochures. Obtain educational and informational material on our IRVM to be presented in seminars and distributed to adjacent landowners, the public consultants, and contractors. Provide guidelines and directives for staff, contractors, and others who seed, plant, and maintain road sides. Encourage the use of seed, plants, and trees native to Iowa." Uh, what part of your department are you going to unload those duties on?
Well, all of the public awareness and management stuff would be staff in City Hall. Um, really, there's nothing, we don't do much planting or anything in any of our right-of-ways. We just mow them and take care of, and do weed management.
I know, but you're supposed to...
If we do go back and have to plant like on, what we're looking at on 18th Street, we do plant, we will be planting native trees to Iowa. I guess I don't understand what, this is all work that would be done either out of my office or working with Pam. It's nothing for my, like, street department would have to do, they wouldn't have to do any paperwork items.
It just seems like it could evolve into something time-consuming, and I think these people...
If this involves something more time-consuming within what we're doing at City Hall, and if that's what it takes to get grant money, then all grants are more time-consuming regardless of where they come from.
What, what size amount of money are we looking at?
I believe we applied for $18,000 on the initial one.
Okay.
It was to buy a piece of equipment to maintain the Riverfront Trail is what we were trying to get a grant for.
And you, you know that there is a requirement, required to get grants that's going to involve some study of minorities, where they live, whether they'll be benefited, called a minority impact statement?
Okay.
Will be required?
I mean, that's kinda why we employ Southeast Iowa Regional Planning to do all of our grant workforce.
And doesn't that cost you a fee?
Costs what?
A fee?
We pay a fee annually to them.
Okay.
And I'm sure Jim can refer more to that, but we pay, we pay regional planning annually to administer grants for the city. And some grants cost a little extra than our annual fee, I believe, but.
Yeah, we have several grants that have a, have grant administration that's, that they end up covering now. I, there are some of them that have minority impact statements, like the, the trail project in and of itself has a DVE requirement, and those get taken care of as part of the oversight of this, and it's part of the costs that goes along with it. Usually when you're, I mean, this is a, for good or bad, like with the Riverfront Trail project, that's on overall cost of 1.35 million for that overall project. We have four different grants that are involved with that totaling 1,050,000. The trail is gonna cost the city about $300,000 to do. Those four grants are time-consuming and cumbersome, and Southeast Iowa has to track all of them and make the, do all the, the payment drawdown requests. It takes, it's, it is burdensome, and some of those pieces are, are not, not necessarily fun to, to do. And, you know, some of the HUD grant that we got for Eighteenth Street was $960,000, but it has a lot of those requirements too, for making sure that you, you take, that you're getting this stuff done the way they want it done. And some of that is what you're asked, or mentioning like with the minority impact statement. They, there is administration that comes, that comes along with it that are extra burdensome costs, but they aren't, and they're a portion of the grant funds that we receive. So we don't necessarily get the benefit of the full grant amount, but we do get a major portion of it. I don't know if that kind of answers it, but, I mean, yeah, we do have some of those things that come along with grants, and each of them has different requirements. Some of them have very few requirements. Some of them are very extensive.
Thank you.
Here, sorry. It says, "Make more efficient and effective use of pesticides as a control of undesirable species." Do we currently use pesticides on anything as part of our regular?
We, we hire it out because we don't have anybody certified for that. So we do, at certain areas of town, we do use pesticides, but it's not our people.
Subcontracted out to?
Yeah.
And would you anticipate that increasing to appease the?
I think not, as of right now, no. We'll, we'll continue to do the same amount we do right now. We use that on our levee, we use it down at the wastewater plant, Ram Park, we use it along River Road, but we have a subcontractor that comes in that's certified to do that.
Thank you.
If I understand the registration and management plan, when you look it up, they're trying to get away from some of the conventional, which would have been a lot of the herbicides and pesticides and mowing, and they're, this, this is supposed, supposed to slow that down and make it what we don't have to use as much of that. That's, that's the whole purpose of this, is they're trying to, instead of just having straight grass, air going there and maintaining it all the time, if we can put stuff up that's more of a topical, more of a controlled by itself, their goal is to not have as many pesticides and herbicides, not have as much mowing, which would reduce obviously your fuel on, in the air, your grass on the roads, things like that. This, this here is supposed to help that instead of having us use more. This should actually improve the fact that we're not doing it as much. And if I also read this, if we don't have this, we can't get any of these funds that we would potentially be eligible for by having this. So there's this, for, for me, this is a win-win situation, because if we have this in place, we also have state funds available. When they become available, we'd, we'd be eligible for that, and it would cut down on some of our manpower actually going out there using herbicides or mowing. Also supposed to make it look prettier and be more appealing to the public. That's not as big a concern to me as the cost basis, so.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12. Consider resolution approving street financing report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. The city receives road use tax funds from the state of Iowa, which are designated to operations and maintenance. To ensure these funds are used appropriately, the city is required to file an annual street finance report, SFR. The SFR has been completed and is attached for your review. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Motion passes. Item number 13.
We have to vote.
All those, I'm lost on this one. I got lost in the vegetation thing. I never dreamed it, it would be like vegetation forever. So anyway, here we go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now we can go to 13. Consider resolution authorizing the mayor to sign demolition contract for single-family dwelling located at 211 North Eighth Street. Do I, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Nuisance demolition, 211 North Eighth Street. The property of 211 North Eighth was damaged by fire on, in November 2023. It was occupied by family members of the owner, and neither had insurance. Due to the extent of the damage, the house was declared unsafe to occupy. Code enforcement slash housing official warrants has issued multiple nuisance violations notices for issues such as yard debris, tall grass, illegal occupancy of an unsafe structure, and unsecured buildings. Although a building permit was issued for repairs, very little progress has been made in nearly two years since this fire. The house is located within 200 feet of Washington School and is considered a dangerous structure. Two bids were received for demolition. CCS, $6,438.42, which was the lowest bid, bid. W and S, $9,950. The property owner will be billed for the cost, and a lien will be placed if payment is not made within 30 days. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14. Consider resolution approving Joyce Park lease, the Keokuk lease with Keokuk Youth Soccer Association. Do I have a motion to approve? I need a second. Joyce Park lease to the Keokuk Youth Soccer Association Incorporated. The Joyce Park Commission has recommended that the city enter into a long-term lease and development agreement with the Keokuk Youth Soccer Association Incorporated. The Joyce Park Commission pursuant to the gift of Joyce Park to the city of Keokuk, and within its charge pursuant to the Keokuk Municipal Code, Section 2.65.010, has approved the general terms and purposes of the lease. The Keokuk's, the Keokuk Youth Soccer Association Incorporated has proposed to undertake the construction of two soccer fields in a manner that meets with the city's approval and complies with the city's code and in accordance with the terms and conditions of the proposal attached as exhibit B and incorporated here in by this reference, and the city desires to see the property developed into soccer fields according to the proposal. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 15. Motion to approve a special event permit for Lake Cooper Foundation Big Dam Street Festival, September 25th through the 27th, 2025, at Victory Park, serving alcohol and having a fireworks display. Want to skip one? All right, item number 15. Sorry about that. Consider resolution approving contract for Keokuk Riverfront Trail Project. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The Iowa DOT receives bid for the Keokuk Riverfront Trail Project, TAP-U-3942-618-81-56. The lower bidder was Jones Contracting Corp. in the amount of $1,193,777. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any more discussion?
The $300,000 that Mr. Farno mentioned a minute ago, that would not be covered. What fund is that coming from?
It's technically not $300,000, because we do have private donations that go towards that. So if you look at the line item of the amount we have budgeted to the amount of the bid, that's, that's.
It says, well, you're, you're 80,000 short.
Yes.
Under budgeted amount versus actual cost.
Yes.
Then we have another 65,000 for the engineering supervision.
So that total is 100.
That comes up to 145.
Uh huh. Jim was rounding.
And you're saying 145 is coming from private donations?
The, the amount budgeted has the private donations included, the 145 is gonna have to come from the city. The extra amount.
This project has gone on for a tremendous, a significant length of time. I have no, no idea how much money was donated from private donations in the past. There was a, there was a decent amount. Brian, I think you were saying that upfront maybe?
It was 100, it was somewhere between 100 and 200,000 dollars.
That has gone in with multiple. It's been years, because this project started back in 2018.
18, according to one of these papers.
So, I, I mean, at this point, that money was put into, the money that was donated was put in a general fund. And the, and the match was approved a long time ago. But it, you're right, we have a responsibility now, it's 300,000 out of the general fund is gonna be the city's portion of this, this cost this year.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 16. Motion to approve a special event permit for Lake Cooper Foundation Big Dam Street Festival, September 25th through the 27th, 2025, at Victory Park, serving alcohol and having fireworks display. I just have to, we just need to approve special event permit for Lake Cooper Foundation for the Big Dam Street Festival.
And I would, would note that the, that the motion should be made that, for the fireworks portion, contingent on their obtaining and submitting insurance for the fireworks. They weren't able to get that insurance until after we had an approved special event.
Any more discussion?
Someone has to make the motion.
So we have?
I'll make that motion with the wording regarding the fireworks pending the insurance.
Now any more discussion too? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 17. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Spark Consulting to assist the Historic Preservation Commission with a planning for a preservation project. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Authorizing mayor to sign a contract with Rebecca Lawan McCle, McCarley, DBA, Spark Consultant, to assist with the Historic Preservation Commission with a planning for a preservation project. The contract agrees to pay the consultant in the amount not to exceed $18,575. The city will, will act as the fiscal agent for the HPC and will be reimbursed in full by the HPC and the state LGC, CLG department. The consultant will be paid in quarterly installments, the first of which will be when the contract is signed. Do I have any more discussion? This one was the one that we, we're gonna vote on a while back, and the federal government pulled the funding, and then now it's back, so. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 18. Council liaison reports. Item number 19. Staff reports. I think, Tom, you do tonight, huh?
Yes, going back to 2021, we bonded for a new press in our press building, and since ADM left, we didn't need that, but the bond had already been awarded. And that bond money has sat in an account, and we've spent some, some of that money, the initial engineering, it's ready to go. If we needed to pick it up to put in a press, it's ready to go. We, they could take it right up, and we would, it's to the point where we would go out and buy a brand-new press. But that money is sitting in an account, and we need to get that spent. And in the spirit of transparency and to let everybody know what's going on, Jim wanted me to let you know that we have that money, and rather than just include unbudgeted items in it and spend that money down at the plant, we wanted to make the council aware that this is happening. And also to seek your advice, if you would like us to let you know every time we buy a new piece of equipment, to let you know, or to, uh, uh, put it in the form of a, a resolution, or whatever you'd like, or if you just wanna maintain the current purchasing policy, whatever you'd like to do.
So, we bonded for 1.8 million dollars originally for that. About 100,000 was spent on engineering. We spent a couple hundred thousand on the monitoring that we, that we're, the monitoring project that Brian's department's doing. I think you're gonna spend a little bit more yet.
Yeah, we still have the Third and Des Moines, yeah, the first flush study for that monitoring equipment, we'll come out of that.
Right.
We used about 470-ish thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood, towards putting into slut, what, sludge cleaning, or?
Yeah.
That was a part of the, when the process with ADM had gone on and the settlement with the state, we agreed to transfer that money over to do some cleanup down at the plant.
Yep. And some of that money came from fines from ADM too. We utilized that money more so for the digester cleaning.
The long and short, there's about a mi, just shy of a million dollars that still hasn't been spent out of that. When you borrow money for a capital project, they like to see that get spent within three years, and we've been four years now. We need to get it, we need to get it spent. It just, it's, it's not a, it's not a good look to have funds borrowed and then not get them spent.
Right.
And so, a lot of the capital projects that we're doing with the, the CSO work, and then, or work down at the plants, doing some upgrades, that, those are all eligible expenses for the way the bond was written. So we just need to encourage Tom to look through his plant, his facility, and see where there are things that need to get upgraded down there, and this is the time to get it done for, for those items. So I, I think this time around, you had on the list of bills, there might have been one piece of, or, you just got it ordered, I don't know if it was on the list of bills or not.
I didn't order it yet, because I wanted to wait for approval. And it's, it's small, relatively small. It's a hose, it's a methane gas hose coming off of a digester, but there's gonna be a lot of other things, and some things, we have a list of, they range from 85,000 down to around 1,000. And it's difficult to plan for those because of the project at Third and Des Moines for the first flush. That's, we don't know what we're gonna get into. We can estimate that it could be less than 100,000, maybe 40,000 or 60,000.
Around 70 was the initial cost estimate from the contractor. That gets them down to the old.
The arch. Yeah.
And then barring no, nothing happening with that brick arch, it would be around there.
Right.
Could be upwards of 150 to 200, depending on what's underneath the surface.
Right, and our consultant, he advised me that, you know, you don't know where, it, it's over 100 years old, that brick arch, and we could tap into that and just encounter nothing but problems. And he said it could run as high as 500. And he said it could run as high as five hundred thousand dollars. So I'm trying to, um, budget, um, for this extra equipment and that first flush study project too. So that's, it's kind of difficult. And I'm really not going to be able to, to nail down any specific items until we get a better handle on the Third and Des Moines Arch, uh, Arch Sewer.
I guess a part of the point here is that we will be having a lot of different items come through that weren't originally budgeted for this year. Just to understand and be cognizant that those come through. Those will be out of the capital account that that money is sitting in. And some of them are going to be a low enough dollar amount that they don't require council approval prior to being ordered. But I still don't feel comfortable without letting you know that Tom is working through this, these items. Some of them that will come to you for approval because they're large enough that they need your approval. Others that just are going to go through the bill process, just so you understand that there are things in a, in an account that you weren't budgeted or anticipated to spend, but will occur during the course of this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So to summarize it, we bonded to get equipment and then the situation changed and we no longer needed the equipment.
Correct.
But we already had the money.
Right.
And so I guess a question I would have, what does it look like if, you know, in addition to getting some stuff that we need at the water plant, what about also maybe just paying down debt with money we didn't use?
Uh, I think, well, we can, but Tom can come up with a long list of items that really do need to be done at the plant along with Brian with the, the monitoring that has to happen. It's already borrowed. It makes sense to get it, to get it spent on items that need to occur, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And it was kind of touchy. Um, Cole sought the advice of a lawyer that deals with this kind of thing. As to what we could use that money for. And since it was bonded for plant equipment and needed to stay down at the plant or things directly involved in our collection system, I believe, uh, in the way of wastewater treatment.
I guess, I, yes, we could use it for debt payment repayment, but we're going to be borrowing money for other projects. It might as well just do the work that needs to be done and make sure that we're getting it done.
Did you ever get the roof?
It's, we're in the process of getting the roof. We're in the process of getting the roof. They've started it, but they've yet to put the new one on. They took, uh, the old material is gravel. They've taken that off and they haven't put the new stuff on yet, but it's in the process.
And who's doing that?
C C S.
Thank you.
Going along with what Tom is talking about here, just, just because we're talking about sewer, one of the things that has been highlighted, I mentioned with the finance committee met, we have, uh, on the sewer side, our rates, uh, on the residential side, we haven't done any rate adjustments since two thousand nineteen. We will be wanting to look at, at doing some changes to the, the rate structure on the residential side over the, during this next year. And we'll talk about what we're trying to accomplish with doing that. But we'll also need, we also need to look at how the current ordinance is written on the commercial, the high usage. And is it industrial usage? I can't remember how that tier is titled.
Right.
We put in place there, uh, a, a rate increase structure that was ten percent per year, uh, beginning in two thousand twenty-four. So we've done it on the commercial side. We did a ten percent rate increase last summer. We did a ten percent rate increase this summer and it's set to be ten percent every year. That's not, that's way too high. We need to get some adjustment on that as well and get those balanced out a little bit. And, and we'll talk, we'll talk through some different things that we're trying to accomplish with that. One will be trying to adjust how much of the debt, the sewer debt that we're paying for out of property taxes, try to reduce that and move it over to being paid for out of sewer revenue.
And one of the reasons for that, that the percent increase was so high is that as we started, the city of Keokuk was so far underneath other cities.
Yeah.
When it came to industrial sewer rates. So we put those, those percentages in effect, uh, for just a few years to catch up to where we should be. And it was designed, I believe the ordinance was designed to look at it again.
Yeah. It, but we can't let it go on into perpetuity like that. So. Anyway, that's something that we'll be looking at over the next couple of months, not, not tonight or anything. But we do need to look at some adjustments there as we move forward.
Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Anybody else? Item number twenty, new business. Item twenty-one, I need a motion to adjourn.
Just a minute. You went real quick there. Um, I have a question. What is our process that we can do to bring about, um, a resolution to Mr. Nye's request? What process do we need to, need to follow to, um, get a consensus from perhaps the whole council regarding his request?
So he wanted a survey and so I, I imagine he wants the city to pay for the survey as opposed to himself paying for the survey?
Uh, yes. And I think it entails from the intersection of Cleveland and Lincoln to, um, Johnson Street Road and Lincoln.
Yeah, because I believe he's come to the council before and he had questions about that road. And he was told due to where property lines fell, that, uh, nothing was going to change at that time. So my guess is he wants this survey to then reestablish where that property line exactly is to see if he has a claim to try to move forward or not then.
My question is, would you have to survey every property touching that street? Or would you be able to survey just the street by itself? Because I'm assuming every different property would be a separate charge.
Well, I, I, I believe what he is asking for is to have the right of way surveyed of the, the road. So you wouldn't necessarily survey the whole properties, but you'd locate the property corner as it came in perpendicular to the right of way line.
And the, the question didn't seem to be whether the road was on private property. It was more about how centered it is on the right of way.
Which there's, there are a lot of streets in, not only in Keokuk, but in many towns that the driving surface is not necessarily centered in the right of way, which it doesn't have to be. It just has to fall within that right of way.
Yeah. And as a matter of fact, the dead end road that is just south of that intersection that goes to the west.
Uh huh.
Adjacent to the golf course, that isn't centered either. It's centered for a portion of it, but you can see it makes a jog and you got a major section of that that isn't centered.
I'm guessing when they built those way, way back then, they followed the, the contours of the land.
Yeah. And that's kind of what happened with this road. It's in the right of way. It's in this designated street right of way, but it does follow a contour. Um, and speaking with him, he had, he does, would like to see that road realigned. So it was right down the center of the street right of way. Uh, would require, I mean, and that's the whole purpose for getting a survey is to see how far it would have to be moved. Um, that's a project, I don't know what you think, Brian, but it's several hundred thousand dollars to, to do a realignment on that two blocks.
And that would, and that would be doing the realignment and not, just putting it back in gravel too. That's not even research.
Yeah. Yeah, you've, there's a, you'd have to redo the contours of every property on the, is it, you'd say north side of that road? And I hate trying to figure out directions on these roads.
Northerly side.
So, uh, what's the feasibility of right there where Lincoln meets Cleveland? Um, the curb has kind of encroached out into the street a good amount. Basically a one lane street now. What is the feasibility of getting a piece of equipment in there and at least scraping that corner back and widening at, at least right there at that intersection, making that wider back to where the original curb was?
I mean, we can take a look at it. I don't have the, in my mind right now, I don't have that visually, but.
It's good. I don't know.
You're talking like where the gravel ties into the concrete intersection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there where Cleveland meets Lincoln. Um, you can see where the curb was at one time. And, um, the yard has kind of grown and grown and grown over the years. It's kind of out in the middle of the street right there.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if maybe, uh, you could take a front end loader or something and at least scrape that back.
I can have, uh, Tom, the street department, take a look at it. They did go out and oil, oil that this year, in which we usually put that on a.
When I talked with him earlier this week.
Schedule, but unfortunately, the day after they oiled that road is when we got that like five to seven inches of rain and it pretty much washed it all off. And it, it's going to need reworked again, um, if we ever get some dry weather.
When I talked with him, I pointed out that if you look at the fire hydrant, right there at the junction of Lincoln and Seventh Street, Lincoln and Seventh, that's the one he wants. Is that Lincoln Road, I believe it is. Seventh Street is, is the one when it meets Seventh Street.
It doesn't meet Seventh.
Anyway, wherever it meets, the, the fire hydrant sits proportionate to where the road is now. My comment to him was when the water department would have come in and did that, however many years ago, they would have run that line. They would have surveyed it then, so they made sure the water line was where it belonged. And so my recommendation to him was have it surveyed because that way he will know, he's looking at Beacon and all this other, which is not necessarily that accurate. And he understands that. But with the water, with the fire hydrant sitting there, that's where the road's got to be because they're not going to move that fire hydrant. That would be an unreal amount of money to come in and have to change all the, the piping and all that in there as well. And I know what he, he wants is he thinks the road basically runs in the middle of them trees. By looking at the fire hydrant, it doesn't appear that that's the case. And like you said, they took it back then. They kind of followed some contours. But when you look at where the fire hydrant sits, the fire hydrant right now is pretty close to where the road already sits. His biggest complaint when he talked to me a couple of years ago is he doesn't like the fact that it's a, it's a single lane road. That's really his big complaint. So I suggested get it surveyed. After you get it surveyed, then you can go from there. Because until we get it surveyed, none of us know for sure where the thing is supposed to sit. Like I said, the fire hydrant to me is a pretty clear point. That would, that, that's got to be pretty close to where it belongs. Because they would have, they would have surveyed it back then, so.
I, I guess one of the things that I would look at for recommendation on where something should go, this, you have a, is there a street committee? Is that right? I'm not sure exactly how.
There's a public works committee.
Public Works Committee that looks at the, like a five-year road plan. And it seems like they're the group that should be talking about where does a project like this fit in? The, the whole purpose of getting a survey is if you are going, looking to figure out what the cost estimate is to re-center the road. Uh, if you're not looking to re-center the road in the next five years, this, the survey, the, the point of doing a survey for that is kind of null and void. It's moot. It's, it's trying to figure out where do you think that fits in and priority wise with the rest of the street projects in the community? So that would be the group that I think should be taking a look and having a discussion about the relative worth of that. But I mean, if it, if you think the council as a whole should do it, that's fine. But it, priority wise, it would, it would make sense that the, that committee that's looking at the street prioritization is who should be talking about that.
When we, we done a Cleveland street there, uh, they, of course they surveyed it and they had to move that street closer to the Elks. If they hadn't of, if you would do that street, Lincoln Avenue going on through, I don't know if it's named Lincoln Avenue after it's passed there, but you'd take off that one, one house's front porch. If you, if you kept going straight.
Does anybody know what any of the other people that live on this street, what their feeling is about it? Is there a consensus that they, they want it surveyed and moved or any, has anybody looked into that? Or has anybody had it? I have never had any other requests. This is the third time that I've had a request from, we've had Mr. Nye for a request. And, um, when I was, wasn't here very long, Robert Helenfall and I, and, um, Steve went and talked to him and then, um, right after Brian was hired, Brian and I and Roger and Steve went. And there were some small things done that were to try to help with water flow and where, I mean, some of the requests where we'd have to change some of where the intakes were for, when the water runs off and that kind of stuff. And so, um, those were all addressed, but does anybody know if anybody else on the road is, um, involved in the wanting a survey or anything or, I don't know.
Now, I did encourage Mr. Nye to reach out to his neighbors to kind of see how they feel about it. But yeah, I don't, don't really know at this point. Some might be in favor of it. Some might like the trees where they're at, you know?
I did go, end up going out and looking at the, the roads. And I would say if we're, even if we're going to not survey or put it down in a priority to move it down, I still think there's things that we can do at this point to help mitigate where that road is and what's actually going on. Because even traveling on that road, I probably wouldn't take my truck on it. And that was after we did the work to it. So I mean, even if we're going to prioritize it and move it out a few years, he is, you know, I, I think there's some good points that we could look at in both of those twenty-third and twenty-fourth that we could do to help out the situation and possibly do it cheaper, you know?
That Lincoln Avenue, I, I can sit there in my living room and watch that and I get up a little early sometimes. But there's cars coming in and out of there all hours of night and day. I would like to have at least a car count and see what that road does do.
Could it be made a one-way street? Would that, that help in any way, shape or form? If, if part of the reason is it's not wide enough and they really want it to be wide, could it be just turned into a one-way street?
Isn't there a survey already in existence? When the town was laid out and properties were assigned and built upon, there should have been a survey already done. So do we have something in the records?
There would have been a, a survey done. I think what Mr. Nye is asking is where that road is physically in relationship to where the survey lines are at, like on the ground. Because if we, if we do end up hiring a land surveyor to come out, he'll set physical points on the ground and then you'll, you'll be able to see what the relationship is from the center of the gravel over to the prop, over to the right of way line, but.
Well, I went out there and I listened to him and I looked at everything and, I mean, I know that we're not a wealthy city and, you know, we have other priorities. The only thing that he really said anything about was a safety issue. I don't, you know, being in the police department, you know, we play bumper cars going down there. I don't know how the fire department gets their apparatus down that road.
And I, I don't know how, like Roger was saying, I don't know how much traffic goes up and down that road, to be honest with you, on the gravel side.
It's probably not the good type of traffic in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I gotta say, I was surprised. I, I'd never been down that road before, but just the couple of minutes I was standing there, probably saw five or six cars go down there. So, you know, a car per minute by my experience is going down there. So it's a pretty well-traveled road.
That's what, maybe if, if, if the people that are going to the golf course or a lot of the people that are using it, maybe if it's a one-way, then it's, it'll only be used one way. You see what I'm saying? So maybe the people leaving or the people coming, one way or the other, it will cut half if, if it was made to one way. But maybe this is a situation where the Public Works Committee needs to, um, get together and have some kind of a powwow and see what they think can be done or look at.
It'd be interesting to see where that big cottonwood tree is, whether it's in the right of way of the road or what. You know, the bigger it gets, the more they move around it and they go up over that bank. Don't go up over, but they go into that bank and cut that down and the water goes there and just sets. It's got nowhere to go.
Okay. Any more discussion? Item number twenty-one, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's go home.